Good evening, and I'd like to welcome you all to the March 14th, 2017 Common Council Meeting, City of Stoughton. And before we get started, I want to welcome our new Finance Director, Tammy LaBordi is here tonight. And then, Tammy said she didn't want all that attention, but I just couldn't resist. And I'd also like to welcome the students that are here, and a couple came in late, so Police Chief Lex said he would be more than happy to sign your paper for you, so you can get back into school. So, the first item on the agenda would be the roll call.
Here.
Kittleson.
Here.
Swidley.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lawrence.
Here.
Mieske.
Here.
Engelberger.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Trul.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
And Bartlett is excused, so there are 11 alders present.
Okay, thank you Lana. So, the next item would be the Communications. Is there any Communications? I have Alder Person Boersma, and I have Mieske. All sorts of Communications tonight, and I have Johnson, Hirsch, and there may be some others. So, Alder Person Boersma can go first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank city staff for attendance at our public open house for a comprehensive plan last evening at the EMS Training Room. It went from 7:00 until after 9:00 PM, and I wanted to acknowledge that our great staff was there, and especially Rodney Shield and Mike Stacy for organizing this and being present for the duration of the discussions. It was a productive meeting, and they did a great job.
All right, thank you very much. Next was Alder Person Mieske.
I have two items. The first, I want to thank city staff for the workforce that we have. They're dedicated, they take ownership in their work, they take a lot of pride in what they do. And with that said, I want to talk about how this council treats city staff at council meetings. First off, we need to be aware that when department heads come to the podium, they are carrying the orders of the committees that they represent, that are, that they serve. And in doing so, they are doing exactly what those committees want. Some of us, including myself at times, have not been fair to those people. They are taking orders from older people, and they're standing up in front of this podium, and they're being unduly questioned and somewhat abused. And that comes from older people who have been on council for quite a while, and some of that have been on more than one council, and that they are people that are very dedicated. What we see when they come to the front is a very small portion of what's going on in the background. We have questions, and we have problems with how things are presented. We have two options. One is, we get the packet of materials a week ahead of time. Call to find out why certain information isn't in there, and you'll get it. No one's hiding anything. Second, if you don't like it, you can state, state that you're not happy about it, and move on. But I've seen this council beat a dead horse more than once. And last week, I was kind of embarrassed. I was embarrassed by some of the, some of the actions that was taken, and some of the accusations that were made to some of the department heads. Okay, that's all I'm going to say on that matter for right now. If you want to talk to me about this afterwards, be more than happy to. Second thing I want to talk about is, we had purchased property through, the city has, that the RDA is now looking at to develop. One of the things that they've done in the last week is to decide upon themselves to remove buildings for development before we even have a chance to look at these developments by contractors and developers. They may be buildings that have assets to them, they may not, I don't know. But to have a, we're going right back to where we were a couple weeks ago, where we have a unrepresented board making decisions on the fabric of this community, and how it's going to, how it's going to be. I do not like this process that we have right now, and because of that, I want to make a motion. I want a motion that the properties that are owned by the city, that there be no demolition until the demolition ordinances are revised, where Landmarks Commission has a chance to have a say-so in how those properties are handled, and that the city council has the final word. I'd also like to make a motion for future demolitions be held until ordinances are revised.
Second, if I do a second now, in communication.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and what I'm trying to decide right now is whether or not the motions are in order, because we're in the communication.
I understand.
So, I'm going to look toward the city attorney for that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we could take action on them if they're not on the agenda. There may be an opportunity to address those issues under item seven.
So, I guess I would ask, if you could, if you could hold on to the motion until then?
Certainly.
Is that okay?
Certainly.
Okay. Oh, good. Thank you. You still have the floor, is there anything?
That's it.
Okay. The next person would be Alder Person Johnson, has communication.
I wanted to do a shout-out to thank Mike Engelberger for putting on last night Planning Meeting, and all the other ones that are involved. But I also wanted to take a special thank you for our very concerned citizens that showed up, and many of them spent many hours doing research on our Planning Commission from 2005 and 2012. And they know their stuff, so I just wanted to say thank you very much for showing up, and thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Next person with Communications is Alder Person Hirsch.
Much of what I was going to kind of bring to light with the spirit of transparency, Alder Mieske has touched on with respect to the Wednesday, March 8th, RDA meeting where they decided to demolish that old highway trailer building for the new riverfront development. This decision was made prior to the community charrettes that are scheduled for April of this year, where the community was supposed to be partners with the developer and the RDA to design this area, and without any consultation with the rest of the council. And so, I guess, you know, and this, maybe we can address this under number seven, where is the state statute with respects to redevelopment authority. It appears that under Section 2-538, any development needs, any development plan proposed by the RDA needs to be approved by the city council, and that has not happened yet. As well as, there was no, with this building being one of the most historic buildings in Stoughton, as it is the old TJ Mant trailer building, which is the precursor to the Stoughton trailers coming into being, it's a very historical building. Landmarks should have been consulted, they were not. So, I guess, with that in mind, and also with this new comprehensive plan that we're all putting together, one of the key components from the survey that we got from the public is that they want to preserve historical buildings and the culture of our community, and their voices were not even consulted when this decision was made. So, with that, I guess I was going to request that at the next meeting, that the RDA present their proposal for how they came to their conclusion to demolish this building, for the council and the citizens to hear. I also request that Landmarks present at that meeting the significance of this building to our culture and history of Stoughton. And thirdly, I would request that the citizens that are listening, and who are in the audience, and the rest of the citizens, to voice their concerns and desires of what, whether they feel that this building should preserve, be preserved or demolished. I mean, your voices need to be heard, and you haven't been able to have that chance. So, that's what I request for next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add to Regina's comments there with regard to the RDA. I, you know, rather than just have them come here and talk about the building that they're trying to demolish, I would like to have a report from the RDA. We haven't heard from them, the council hasn't heard from them for quite some time. I think occasionally we should be given a report. And, you know, I think we need to take a look at the state statutes with regard to commissions, on how motions are brought forward, and what needs to come to council, and what doesn't need to come to council. I think there's been some, I'm not going to say that there's been anything intentionally done, but I think there's some things that may not have always come into the council that should come to the council. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just for you folks sitting out there, the RDA is Redevelopment Authority, and they're a commission that is set up with some community members, and I believe there's one or two council members on there, and they're working on various projects that have to do with redeveloping areas that are considered blighted, so we're looking to improve them areas in our community. Anybody else have communications? Alder Person Lawrence?
Yeah, thank you, President Swidley. Just wanted to tell council members that President Swidley and Dennis Alderman Kittleson, and the mayor and I met a few days ago, what was that, Friday?
Friday, yep.
Yeah. And talked about where we're going with economic development, and after frank exchange of views, we decided that we're going to, useful and frank exchange of views, we're going to try to move forward. And I think the plan is to have a, not a committee of the whole, but it may be a special council meeting on that, which will be probably preceded by some presentations by folks who can give us some ideas of what city's size of Stoughton can do in terms of economic development. Possibly somebody from UW, that's all just kind of unformed at this point, but we're starting to work on that. Did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
Pretty much summarized it.
That was essentially it.
Except for the time. We're going to try to block it into a piece of time, so everybody knows that it'll be start and finish.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, you're right. I think we were shooting for an hour and a half, or hour and 45 minutes, something like that, to try to get it all wrapped up and economically taken care of. So, that was it, thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I have communication from the clerk.
Just wanted to let everybody know that the election is coming up on April 4th, and we will have in clerk's office absentee voting, starting in City Hall on March 20th, so this coming Monday, and that'll go through Friday, March 31st. Just a reminder that there is no absentee voting in the clerk's office, or registering to vote on the Monday before the election as well. And I also wanted to let council know that at the next council meeting, so the 28th, we want to have everybody come here at 6:30, and we're all going to get together and take a nice picture as a council. So, 28th at 6:30, here in the council chambers.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have communications? And I have one. As I mentioned two weeks ago, I was in the process of setting up a date with the, with the school district for a joint meeting, so it would be a committee of the whole, and we did manage to get that scheduled, and it would be April 20th at 7:30. So, it'll be right about the time the Business Expo ends, so hopefully people will be able to attend both. We haven't decided on a venue yet. I imagine it'll either be here, or at the, at the school board room in the administration building, and then we're still working on agenda ideas. And the date was April 20th at 7:30. So, hopefully, everybody can attend, and we're going to talk about some of our common challenges, and I think we're mostly going to focus on, on growth and economic development type issues. Anybody else have communications? I think we heard from just about everybody tonight, so that's good. Next item on the agenda would be the public comment. In public comment, we have two people that have requested to speak tonight, and we ask that you limit, there's a third one back there, we can bring that up. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and Lana will inform you when there's 30 seconds left, and when your three minutes are up, the timer will go off, and we'll just ask you to finish up quickly at that point. So, the first person that's scheduled to speak is Ryan Swanson, and if you could just state your name and address, and I believe we're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. My name is Ryan Swanson. I'm with Arc Design Resources, 5291 Zenith Parkway in Loves Park, Illinois. I'm here tonight on behalf of Casey's, and there's a couple of agenda items, and obviously, I'm here to answer any questions that the format permits, but the main thing I just want to note is, a couple of questions have come up regarding the hours of operation, and after the last council meeting, I did get clarification that this store will not be a 24-hour store. The hours will likely be 6:00 to 11:00 PM, possibly 5:00 to 12:00, depending on demand, but at least out of the gate, it'll be 6:00 to 11:00. So, I just want to clarify that for everyone, and I think that'll address some of the neighbors' concerns as well. That's all I have at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Swanson, we have been notified that there may be some questions about the approval of the second access on Highway 51. Can you provide us any, is there any information you could share with us?
I, excuse me, sure can. The initial submittal was made to WISDOT, and the initial response back was a denial of our proposed access cut, primarily due to the lack of spacing, there are spacing requirements for access points. We submitted, we were offered to appeal that, which we have. Right now, that appeals in review. We're expecting an answer back within probably the next one to two weeks, based on information I received yesterday. I will note that the site plan, you know, works, basically, the site plan would be exactly the same without that access. We have circulation of the trucks that can circle the canopy. KC Standards also don't want trucks to get stuck at any point in the site, so trucks can always circle that area. But right now, we're waiting for the appeal. Obviously, we think we have some strong arguments for it. We obviously have a strong competitor just down the street with two very large curb cuts, existing condition, I understand, but that's where we stand as of today. So, we're still, like I said, we've appealed, and we're optimistic that we're going to get a positive result out of that appeal at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You're going to be available all night, or are you taking off?
No, I'll be through the agenda items, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good then. We can ask it later.
Okay, all right, we'll do. I'll try to remember you're first on the list. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next person that is requested to speak is Laura Trotter.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Trotter, and I'm the Director of the Chamber of Commerce. I am here to speak in support of the two item agendas you have in regards to the property at 51 and N. As the Chamber of Commerce, and my board has asked me to make this statement, we, we support development of businesses throughout the city, and we feel very strongly that businesses on the east side are needed. So, I just wanted to, you know, in case you had a lot of negative comments tonight, we wanted to be a positive comment for our support for that development. I'm going to switch gears for a second, and speak as somebody who lives on the east side. I live out of town, but that is my access in and out of town, and I wholeheartedly welcome it as a consumer and user in Stoughton. As, as we all know, all of our development is on the west side. Our east side is in sore need of some development. So, that's what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. And the next person is Brian Johnson.
Hello, Brian Johnson, 700 Park Street here in Stoughton. I've lived in the city for about 25 years now, and on the east side for the last 12. And I've often thought that we needed some more development on the east side, and so I'm in full support of this development, and thought this is a perfect spot for a gas station convenience store. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have one more person, and I believe it's, is it Dave? Is it Natter?
Good evening. My name is Dave Natter. I'm with Natter Commercial Properties, and I'm representing the marital trust that owns the 1640 East Main Street where Casey's is proposed. Certainly, we, we are working with a good company here, a national company, and they've done everything they could to work with the council, and the city, and the county. We ask that we go ahead and, we ask that you go ahead and change the zoning from rural holding to planned business, I believe, in your comprehensive plan that is slated for a commercial use here in the future. And we also ask that you approve the conditional use permit requested by Casey's. This project is going to create jobs. I think we've got potential employees sitting in here behind us here. And last thing that we have that I think everyone should know, that Casey's makes great pizza. So, these guys can, maybe we can bring some in here one of these nights here, and treat you all. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come and speak? Any of the high school students have anything on your mind tonight? Okay, we'll move on. The next item would be the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is typically small items that are placed on there, like meeting minutes and non-controversial items that can get quick approval. So, I'm looking for a motion.
I move, I move to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Anybody like anything, the minutes removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. The first item under Old Business comes from the Planning Commission, Alder Person Trul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Plan Commission brings forth ordinance 2-2017, and ordinance amending the zoning classification from certain lands located at 1640 East Main Street in the City of Stoughton, from RH Rural Holding to PB Planned Business for the purposes of a Casey's general store. Plan Commission recommends approval, and I would move approval.
Second.
I had a motion and a second from somebody over here. Engelberger, okay. Go ahead, Alder Person Trul.
Thank you. At this time, with the question about the second access, I would ask that we table this. I think the Plan Commission took this up. I think we had an extensive discussion about the location. We talked about the look of the building, access and the like. I'm quite confident, though, that had we been presented with a plan that would have only had one access, I'm confident we would have had more discussion and the like. And so, since there is some question about whether or not we're going to have the Highway 51 access, I would move that we table.
Second.
So, there's a motion to table by Trul, and a second by Lawrence, and the motion to table is not debatable. So, all those in favor of table, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, no.
Yes, no.
Which is it?
One opposed. Okay, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda comes from the Public Works, Alder Person Vice President Mieske.
Thank you. Public Works presents ordinance 3 of 2017, amending portions of the Erosion Control and Stormwater Management Code, sections within Section 10-122, 10-127, 10-129, 10-130, and 10-131 of the Stoughton Municipal Code. And I so move.
Second.
A motion by Mieske, and a second by Engelberger, Alder Person Mieske.
Again, this is a, an augmentation of the erosion control plans, and stormwater plans for mitigating erosion control along public properties.
Okay.
And, how'd I do?
You, you did well.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
If I can just add a clarification, the city operates a stormwater discharge permit. Under that permit, there's certain conditions that we have to adhere to. This helps to bring those standards into compliance with NR 151 and NR 216. We worked collaboratively with outside consultants, as well as the city attorney's office, to draft these recommended improvements to the ordinance.
Okay, is there any questions on, on the ordinance? I guess, the question I have is, can you give us an example where this might come into play?
It's not limited to just public properties, but there's standards related to how stormwater, stormwater and/or erosion control applications are permitted, are submitted, certain materials and things that have to be identified in the plan. And then, there's criteria for stormwater management that are also reinforced in the, in the revisions that have been made here.
Okay, thank you.
Throughout the entire city. So, it's not limited to just public properties. It's any, any development that would occur related to a stormwater application or an erosion control plan.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Item number seven, discussion regarding recommended changes by Landmarks Commission relating to Chapters 78-517, 78-913 of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code, and I have Vice President Mieske.
Again, I will bring forth my motion for a stopping of all demolition of city properties, and any future demolition of historic buildings until ordinances have been reviewed and modified to council's satisfaction.
So, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. So, I have a motion by Mieske, and a second by Johnson. And, would you like to continue?
Not really.
Oh, okay.
Can, can the motion be read back, please, because I'm not sure I quite got it.
Yeah, we, I need to make, I need to make sure I understand it, too. I think we're going to figure out whether it's within the scope of the agenda.
So, I have the motion. Motion by Mieske, that all present and future demolitions within the city be halted until all pertinent demolition ordinances are revised and approved by the city council. Second by Johnson.
You said that really fast.
Sorry.
Okay. I'd like you to say it again, more slowly, please.
Sorry. That all present and future demolitions within the city be halted until all of the pertinent demolition ordinances are revised and approved by the city council.
No.
No.
It would be
And next.
Future, future demolition that have not yet been in the process of being, for application.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then also, that any city-held property, that there no demolition be taken until ordinances are changed. ordinances are changed and modified.
Okay. So that all future demolitions along with city-owned property demolitions not occur? Okay.
Okay, so the city attorney has some questions, I'm guessing.
Let me, let me hear it from the start again.
Second.
Nice and slow. I'm getting tired.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Okay. The motion that, that all future demolitions within the city along with any city-owned property demolitions be halted until all pertinent demolition ordinances are revised and approved by the city council. Am I correct?
Okay. Close enough.
Can I?
Sure. Let me just give a little background. So what we have on the agenda tonight is, the Landmarks Commission is in the process of updating some ordinances that relates to historical buildings within the city. And basically, they haven't brought recommendation back to the council, have they? I know the city attorney has been meeting with them and reviewing.
Well, that's actually the agenda item.
Yeah. You're reviewing the materials that they've worked on. And I think that, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, that the motion is related to the work that they have started, and I don't know if they've completed that work yet or not.
Matt, if you don't mind, I just
Sure, go ahead, Alder Person.
Comments I would make about the motion, the way I understand it, I think I understand the reason for the, for the motion, which is to prevent historic buildings from being torn down. But the way the language is, is that it prevents all demolitions from being halted. So that's one thing. And the second thing is that the language says until the council changes the ordinances. What if we don't change the ordinances?
Aye.
So that would be, that's my second question about that. And I'm sorry, Tom, if you want to
Sure, question for Director Shields. How many demolitions do we get a year?
Few.
So.
Okay, so we got that.
So just a couple of questions. So one thing I heard you say, Alder Person Mieske, is that you didn't intend for this to apply to any proposed demolition where someone has already submitted an application to proceed. Did I hear that correctly?
I believe so, because of the state statutes, I believe the way they are written do not allow us to stop.
I think that's correct, yeah. Okay, so I want to make sure I understood that. And that's not clear in the text of that motion. And then actually, again, trying to figure out how far we can go within the scope of the agenda tonight. The agenda item that we're dealing with is related to the discussion of, as Alder Person Swadley said, some proposed or changes that the Landmarks Commission has been working on to ordinances relating to historic preservation of structures, preservation of historic structures, historic districts. So it seems to me that if, if you were able to craft your motion so that it would be limited to properties that are either in existing historic districts or that have been designated as historic structures, that would perhaps be within the scope of this. But going beyond that, I think it would be hard to say that, that the agenda gave notice that that kind of action might be taken. So if you could narrow it up to that, that would, I think, help.
I would, I would do that, as long as all city properties are included in that also.
Any city-owned property?
Any city-owned properties beyond
Whether it's in a historic district or not?
Correct.
So that one, you know, and I take it your concern is that there may be city-owned properties that have historic character?
Yes.
That's the issue? That's your intent? Okay. Okay, I can live with that. But I want to hear the, I want to hear the rest of them. I want to hear the restated motion, make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay. Should I take questions or the, okay. So Lana's updating that. I think I saw a couple hands over here. Alder Person, Trul, did you have your hand up? Okay. So I had Hirsch and then Johnson.
Could I just, you said some things about where we are procedurally. I'll just tell you my understanding of where we are.
Okay.
Which may or may not be complete. So it's my understanding that the Landmarks Commission did meet and did develop some written recommendations for amending the city's ordinances relating to, well, in particular, some proposed revisions to chapter 78, which is the zoning code, and in particular relating to the downtown design overlay district. Those recommendations were forwarded to me. I was asked to review them, and I did. And I provided a memo to you all that was in your packet with my comments. I'd be happy to obviously discuss any of those issues with you tonight that you'd like to discuss.
Okay. So I had Alder Person Hirsch and then Johnson.
Yeah, I was just, I think we're looking at what the Landmarks Commission, as it relates to the Plan Commission, I would, I guess I would request that we also look at the RDA Commission as well, what their decision-making with respect to landmarks. And so it's not just the Plan Commission as well. So we're consistent with all the different commissions and what their responsibilities are. So we're, you know, all statutes are actually looked at.
Can I sit down?
Okay. Thank you. Alder Person Johnson.
Hi, I am on the committee for the Landmarks. And the city attorney's correct. We had a meeting since he brought back the recommendations. And what I heard the Landmarks is going to be doing is we're going to meet again and fine-tune some of the questions that the attorney had. And then they wanted to submit them back, but they also wanted to maybe try to have a meeting with you, Matt, at the same time, so we don't keep on ping-ponging back and forth and just, because we, they have historical brains and you have attorney brain. So we're just trying to get the language instead of ping-ponging back and forth. So that's what one of their requests was.
Okay. Thank you for the information. Alder Person Mieske.
I think how so Alder Person Hirsch's dilemma would be to, basically, because the RDA is a arm of city government, it's a commission, that we say any city properties that the city considers for demolition must go through the same procedures through landmarks.
Right. I mean, I guess, because we were looking at the statutes specifically with Plan Commission language, I think we should make sure that it also includes RDA, so they're consistent with the two commissions. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Do I have to make a motion?
Hang on just a second.
I think, I think
Did you catch your last part?
I'm not there yet. But I mean, I think that the issue you're raising is certainly one that can be discussed as part of the process of evaluating what changes you might want to make to the ordinances.
Okay.
I, I understand your concern. I'm, you know, we haven't really figured out how to address it. I haven't figured out how to address it yet.
Okay.
And I'll bring it to the committee.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions while we're working on the motion here? Alder Person Engelberger?
Well, I mean, I'm actually working on a motion myself here because I think there's a little more to it than, than what the motion that I heard read.
Okay. Well, can you wait until he reads it back?
Yeah.
And then we'll see where we want to go from there? Okay. Anybody else? All right, we're waiting on you.
Regina, do you want to send me an email exactly in your own words what you want? I don't think he's going to make a motion.
Alder Person Trul?
Aye.
Just a point of clarification. I believe I understand the intent of how this is trying to be applied with regard to the RDA and the Highway Trailer Building. But as I understand the motion in terms of city property, if you're using that same, same thing, I believe that also will prohibit the taking down of the Milfab Building. So just a point of clarification, unless someone else looks at it differently. So
Well, and actually, there's another two points. The way the motion reads now refers to city-owned property. Those properties are all currently titled to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Stoughton. So there's a little ambiguity there. But your point is, if it is city property, I mean, the Milfab property would fit in the same category.
Yeah, my, my point is, I believe that the primary focus of this from a city property standpoint is, as Alderman Hirsch had talked about, the, the decision on the Highway Trailer Building. But we have been moving forward with development plans to clean up and demolish the Milfab Building as well. And I would assume that falls in the same category one way or the other.
Can I ask a question about, I mean, where is the RDA with respect to the Highway Trailer Property? I mean, is demolition imminent?
No.
Okay. This is a really complicated thing we're trying to do here. And my suggestion is that if you're, at least with respect to the, the city property piece of this, that maybe we come back when we've had a chance to work through some potential issues with how the language is structured. The other thing I'm a little concerned about is I'm just trying, the language, until all pertinent demolition ordinances are revised and approved, I'm not exactly sure what that means. I'm trying to work on the language.
Wouldn't that be more appropriate as Alderman Lawrence had indicated, you know, until all ordinances are reviewed or something? Because again, revising assumes that there's going to be action, and likely is.
I'm going to try and adjust that language. Let me just work on this for a minute here. Make motion and then explain.
Well, your motion's on the table, so we should
It's not done. It's close, but it's, and I still have some concerns that we'll have to talk about. looking for. Motion by Mieske that no further applications or requests for demolition of any structure within any existing historic district or any currently designated historical landmark within the city be processed, and that no demolition of any city-owned property proceed until the city council has considered possible changes to demolition-related ordinances and lifted this temporary moratorium, period. Because that's what this is. That's how I would reframe the motion. I'll tell you that these moratoria are a little complicated animal. One of the things this does from a legal standpoint is it says to someone, you're not under this, or with this motion being adopted, the city won't process an application that you're currently allowed by law to submit under our zoning ordinance. So effectively, we're modifying an established zoning procedure, and we're not following the rules for modifying zoning procedures. So I have no opinion tonight as to the enforceability of this, but that's, that's what I think you're trying to do. But I do have, I can't tell you that it's enforceable.
So the question for you then is, did he capture the intent of what you're trying to do?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Alder Person Trul?
Just a question in terms of timing. You know, do we, could we consider putting a sunset on the temporary? Or do we have any sense of how quickly we'll have an opportunity to take up the ordinances and the review?
Well, so I, I have said before that I find this stuff to be a little complicated. If you've reviewed my memo, maybe you have a flavor for it. And I think the Landmarks Commission wants to have an opportunity to meet with me and discuss how we could change the ordinances to meet their objectives. I would expect that process to require at least one meeting with me and the Landmarks Commission, possibly two, before we could come back to council with something. That would be my best guess.
Go ahead.
Further, I guess I would request that whatever comes out of this recommendation also be referred to the Redevelopment Authority and the Plan Commission for their review and comments as well, since you're effectively changing, Landmarks is proposing to change rules that apply to both of them.
Well, that hasn't happened yet. And given what I heard about the question or about the Redevelopment Authority, I'm not sure that we would end up with changes to the Redevelopment Authority's powers itself. We might? I don't know, maybe. I guess what you could say, that if there are changes to their powers, then you'd want them to look at it. And there may or may not be that come out of this process. I don't know.
So is that a reminder?
Taking away the ability, the Redevelopment Authority currently, I believe, have, has the authority to recommend and to remove the building, the Highway Trailer Building.
But it's, but it's possible that they might be subjected to a permitting process that would require approval from another body before they could demolish the building. Let me ask, Rodney, is, is there any permit required to demolish, for example, the Highway Trailer Building at this time?
There's a permit required for any demolition. I don't know that it applies to the downtown design district issue that
So the right be, the permit that's required now might be a simple permit issued administratively. It might be that as a result of further work on the city's ordinances or other actions that are taken, a building like the Highway Trailer Building could be subjected to a requirement that a different layer of approval must be obtained before it could be demolished. I'm not sure how that's going to play out.
Alder Person Engelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with the restated motion that the attorney read, with the exception of, I would, I would like to have something in there regarding a historic building that may not be in the, under, in the overlaying district or whatever the other, something, let's, let's say, let's say a building on the, in one of the, just a different part of town that doesn't include that area. Basically, any historic building is what I'm talking about.
Well, if it's not been designated as a historic structure, or it's not included in a historic district, I don't know how to define that.
Well, if it's not historic. Well, we can talk about that. But here's what I want to say about this issue, this item. The attorney's written two letters to us regarding this issue. Rodney wrote a letter to, actually to the Kittelsons regarding a specific situation with this. And in all three of those cases, there were, basically, they state that there are problems with our ordinance, conflicting information in our ordinances. And to me, that's what we want to fix. I'm agreeable to what Scott said regarding what you just mentioned, by having the Plan Commission or, or
RDA.
Landmarks, RDA, Plan Commission. Yeah, they should look at it, too. Commission or Landmarks, RDA, Plan Commission, yeah, they should look at it too. We don't need to take all kinds of time to do this, I don't think. I think we can have the attorney meet with the Landmarks Commission, get all of the questions answered. He had a lot of questions in his, raised a lot of questions in his letter. And a lot of those, to me, I think are pretty simple to answer. You know, like, what process to use here? You didn't specify a process. Basically, to me, it should be the same process for if any organization, any of these commissions are advising, or whether it's the council, the landmarks, the Plan Commission, they should all be looking at the same standards, as far as whether, you know, how you're going to demolish a building, or what the standard should be. It should all be the same. So, I think there's some pretty easy fixes. But the main thing we need to do here is get rid of the conflicts that are in the ordinance. That's the essence of why Tom is asking for this. And I think we can do this within a month, or maybe two months, if not within a month, and get it back to the council and get something where we're agreeable, that it's not in conflict anymore. I think that's all we're asking for here. And I think it's a pretty straightforward process. I'm not trying to hold back any demolitions of anything. If it comes to where a building needs to be demolished, then it needs to be demolished. But let's have, let's have our ordinances accurate and not in conflict, so we don't have, end up with a lawsuit of some kind because we did this or that. One other question I want to just ask Rodney. You said just a few demo permits we've had a year, basically?
Roughly.
So, what, as far as demos in the overlay districts, how many of those have we had?
None come to mind in the recent past. The question was related to demos in the city.
Okay. And then, I guess, another question, the Highway Trailer or the RDA area, is that within the district or not?
I haven't looked to see if it is. I don't, I don't believe that it is, but I have not researched that.
I mean, that's, that's a case where my concern of how the, how the language is, that you read the language there?
Right, so, right now, it applies to, it says, city-owned buildings.
Okay.
As I said, that particular building is currently titled to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Stoughton. That, read broadly, would be considered a city-owned building. You know, if the redevelopment, look, this is complicated stuff. I would hope that the Redevelopment Authority wouldn't, you know, push this with the City Council on this, and put us in a legal position, or in a legal quandary. But, you know, if the Redevelopment Authority applied for a demolition permit, and the city staff said, "We're not giving you one on the basis of this motion," I would hope that would be the end of it, but I can't guarantee that.
Alderperson Hirsch?
I think what Scott's concern is if, is not necessarily the Highway Trailer Building at this point, but it's some of the other Milfab buildings that are, I think we've all agreed previously, need to come down for that site to go on. So, by, I'm in complete agreement with the historic buildings, but these other buildings that we have, you know, plans to demolish, do we need, with this new mandate, or whatever you want to call it, can we get an exemption for those nonhistoric buildings to go forward in this development?
If the motion could be amended to that effect, yes.
Thank you.
And as Regina was making my case, that's really the point. We have been, this body, I mean, later on this evening, we have another, another potential property that we are encouraging, I'm going to be encouraging the council to purchase and move forward to clean, to clean up and do things as a part of the development. If your intent is, and if the focal point of this is, is the Highway Trailer Building, then please call that out. Say straight away, that's what we're going to do. We're going to request that, that the council is going to request that the RDA does not move forward with that. But we have been working through an entire process to try and, and clean up the rest of the Milfab property and the rest of that acreage down there. And again, by, as I interpret the motion as suggested, either they're all in, or they're not in, in terms of the Redevelopment Authority. And so, I would ask that if it is the intent to focus on the Highway Trailer Building, call that out, let us move forward with the Milfab, the other two metal buildings that are down there, and let us continue to try and finally clean up the Riverfront.
You're asking to make this simple?
I, yeah, well, yeah.
Alderperson Jensen and then Mieski?
Yes, I just want to, see, I agree with Alderperson Trul. I think it should be simplified. It's, this just seems like overreach to me. It just seems like it's, it's too much. If it needs an amendment, I would like to do that, to make it specific to the Trailer Building, period.
So, to replace city-owned property with the Highway Trailer Building?
Just the Highway Trailer Building, period.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
So, there's a...
That's the proposed amendment.
A proposed amendment, is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderperson Lawrence. So, we have to take up the vote on the amendment first. Is there any discussion on that?
Mr. President, if I could though, before, can we have the proposed language read first though?
Sure.
Before we discuss it anymore.
On the amendment?
No, what Matt drafted before.
The original motion, right.
So, we have the original motion, which we're going to read, and then there's an amendment, and then we'll have a discussion and a vote on the amendment first. And then, depending on what happens, and it'll go back to the motion, with or without that amendment.
Correct.
Okay. Are you ready?
So, the original motion that the city attorney had offered earlier was a motion made by Mieski that no further applications or requests for demolition of any structure within any, I'm sorry, existing historic district, or to a currently designated historical landmark within the city be processed, and that no demolition of any city-owned property proceed until the City Council has considered possible changes to demolition-related ordinances and lifted this temporary moratorium with a second by Johnson.
Okay, and so, then the effect of the amendment, proposed amendment, is to just interchange city-owned property for the Highway Trailer Building? That's the simple effect of the amendment?
That is right.
Okay. Anything else? Alderperson?
Let Tom go first.
Okay, Mieski and then Hirsch.
Just a quick question for Representative RDA. What is the timeline for the demolition of the Milfab?
I believe that Gary Becker, our consultant, is looking, getting the paperwork in place for the Milfab and area, and may have included the Highway Trailer Building after last week's meeting.
So, I guess my question is, is getting paperwork in place, two months? Three?
No.
A week?
Probably a week, or a month, within the month.
This is the RFP? To go out to get a bid on it? Is that the paperwork you're referring to?
Yeah, also, there's, he's finalizing grant, grant applications and things like that as well.
Oh, so, it's more than that. So, this, so even if it's just the Highway Trailer Building, that would effectively kind of halt moving forward with that process, at least with respect to that building?
No. With regard, again, if we, if you are looking to, to make sure that nothing happens, that the Highway Trailer Building does not move forward with any demolition, if that's the intent of the motion, then again, if we call that out, the intent, the action that the RDA did took up a week ago doesn't affect the previous actions, which was to move forward in cleaning up the Milfab property, and ultimately taking down the old Milfab Building. So, we acknowledge...
They can still move forward with that?
Right. That's where I've been asking the question about, I don't know, that's why I asked the question about, about either a sunset on this, or what kind of timeframe you think you're looking at, so.
Okay, Alderperson Borzma?
I like the amendment part of it. And the reason why I like that is because it limits it to some extent, because we're also talking about other properties, including a property on Main Street. So, I think it makes it cleaner if we're only talking about one building and not everything right now, especially when we're waiting for information, more information from the Landmarks Committee, because I think we need, we need that information. So, I'm, I'm going to be supporting the amendment, which only restricts it, as I understand it, to the Highway Trailer Building.
Okay. Now, Alderperson Kittelson and then Hirsch.
If the amendment's going to be with Stoughton Trailers Building, I would support that also. But I would like to give a little bit of encouragement to Landmarks Commission, that they should probably go out and do an inventory of all of these buildings that come up when it comes time that somebody wants to move forward. Because as soon as someone's moving forward, then everybody comes out of the woodwork. So, if we had a collection, if they had a collection of buildings, they had an inventory...
They do.
...of a possible, okay, if you say they do...
In order, in order to be...
I will use my...
In order to be in a historic...
...property that we're discussing right now. I'll use my property that we're discussing right now as an example. My wife and I went to Landmarks Commission. The Landmarks Commission there had no recollection that the building was even ever for sale. So, my recommendation would be to do an inventory and have somebody kind of watch the inventory that goes through, and see exactly where that stuff sits. So, I said I would support the Highway Trailer, but I think by adding on to that, that the Landmarks Commission needs to do an inventory of the stuff, and kind of talk to the property owners at that point.
Alderperson Mieski?
There is an inventory. It's done when any, when the National Register of Historic Districts is, is put in place, each and every building within that district is inventoried. So, there is, there is an inventory. Is it, is it the Landmarks Commission's job to monitor what may happen? I don't think so. It's not their, that is not their charge, so to speak. So...
Okay. One more response, and then we'll move on. Is this on the same?
Same thing. It's, that is true with what he said there, but now some of these buildings here are not recognized that way, but they are considered local. So, that's where I'm trying to refer to, is the ones that are not on a national, but on the local level.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Then I have Alderperson Jensen and then Hirsch.
I just want to respond to Dennis's comment. The Landmarks did know that this house was for sale, but the sign went down, so they didn't think it was for sale any longer. They thought somebody had purchased it, and that a business was going to go into it. And a building, from my, being educated on the landmarks, a building does not necessarily have to be, have to have the person that owns it be a participant in having it be on the register. That's the National Register, they do, but not on the local. And the reason why this debate is probably coming up is that the downtown is in all-over historical overlay. So, you don't have to go from building to building to building to building to say, "This is a historical," it's the whole district is in a historical overlay. So, just want to make some clarification there.
Okay. Thank you. Alderperson Hirsch?
Thank you. And I think this goes in line with what Dennis was saying. I think there's, there's historical districts with the overlay, but there's other, and I think this is what Dennis was trying to get to, there's other culturally significant and historical buildings throughout the city that do not fall underneath this overlay or in, within a particular district. And that's where it'd be nice if the Landmarks can, you know, mark those, so people, when something comes up, say, for the Planning Commission, or a permit or something, the Landmarks already has identified those buildings of, as of cultural significance or historic significance for the city. They may not have gone through the historic site, or, you know, preservation paperwork, but they're important to our city. And so, that would be, you know, nice that that, you know, at least to be in. That's, I think, if that's what you were trying to say, is like, you know, it's beyond just the districts and the overlay.
Yeah, it's, basically, it's that, and then for the Landmarks to work with the people and to have a little bit of understanding both directions, what can be done and can't be done. I totally understand their idea of preservation, but not all of the time will it be economical to be able to do that preservation. So, it's, I'll just, I'll end this like President Tim asked to do.
All right. Thank you for your comments. So, we're back to the amendment. Any more questions on the amendment? Alderperson Hirsch?
Well, I think, at a point of clarification, I don't think it was just brought up just for the mere fact of the Highway Trailer Building, but it was, it's also for all these other buildings that might be looked at for demolition, because we don't have them labeled as historic or, you know, have cultural significance to them. So, I guess, that was, I think, in the intent. It wasn't just like to nail the Highway Trailer Building, it's to, again, be a little bit more inclusive with, you know, buildings.
Okay.
So, with the, if the amendment is adopted, then the main motion...
Yeah, I know that.
So, if the amendment is adopted, then the main motion would cover the Highway Trailer Building, any building in a historic district. Language is a little vague about what historic district means. As we know, we have locally designated historic districts under Chapter 38. We also have historic districts listed on the National Register of Historic Places. On something like this, I'd really like to be clear, if we mean both of those things, we should say it. We also have the downtown design overlay district, which is yet another category which may not be exactly the same as the first two. So, this, I don't want to make this more complicated than it is, but if that's what you want to cover, then I think the language should cover those three things. And in addition to that, any locally designated landmark, and any individual structure listed on the National Register of Historic Places. That would cover all the categories I'm aware of. Then what you'd be left leaving out would be structures that you might consider historically or culturally significant, but have not yet been designated either by the city or on the National Register, and they're not in our downtown design overlay district.
You got all that, Lana?
So, why don't we start with the motion, with the amendment, and then we can go from there?
Okay. So, I'm going to go back to Alderperson Jensen, because it was his amendment to see if he wants to include what you just said.
No, I think Matt had it right in hand, so it's all of that plus trailer. That's what I just said. Okay, Lana?
Want me to type?
Yeah.
Okay. So, while he's typing, I saw a couple hands up. I had Alderperson Trul and then Engelberger.
Can we take a recess until tomorrow?
What's good? Tomorrow's going to change things.
This is not going to take till tomorrow now.
All right. Alderperson Engelberger?
I'll hold my comments for now. I'm good with what the amendment's so far.
Okay.
I guess I, I guess I will say, when it comes to, if these are both passed, and it comes to the actual writing and, you know, changing of these ordinances so they don't conflict, there's one thing I wanted to tell Matt, which he didn't cover in all of these zones or districts, or historic, national historic, or local. I'll give you an example. The condo that I, my condo association, I don't live in the building, but we have a hundred-year-old, 110-year-old schoolhouse, south, the South Side School, built in 1900, 1901. It is on the National Register, but it's not a local landmark, it's not in a historic district in Stoughton.
But it's listed on the National Register of Historic Places?
It is, but...
Will be captured by this...
I understand that, but I'm talking about when you start rewriting the ordinance, and we talk about that. The way it is right now, somebody come in, buy the place, get a, get an exemption from the state, tear it down. That's what I want, to make sure we aren't exposing ourselves to.
Just a second, I've got to regroup here.
Just a second, I gotta regroup here.
Okay, here's what it now says. This would be as amended. This is, I'm going to read the whole motion if it were amended. That no further applications or requests for demolition of any structure within any existing city-designated historic district, within any historic district listed on the National Register of Historic Places, within the Downtown Design Overlay District, or a currently designated, currently city-designated landmark or structure listed on the National Register of Historic Places be processed. And that the demolition of the Stoughton Highway Trailer Building not proceed until the City Council has considered possible changes to demolition-related ordinances and lifted this temporary moratorium. So the, that's the revised motion in its entirety if it's amended. Obviously, there's a lot of amendment language. So maybe the easiest thing to do would be to treat it as a substitute motion. Treat the amendment as a proposed substitute in its, you know, entirely new language. And then if that adopt, is adopted, you're done.
So we'd want to withdraw the amendment in the original motions?
Why don't we offer up a substitute as a third step? You want to offer that as a substitute motion?
I will do that, yes.
Okay, so-
Second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have the substitute motion and a second. And do you want it read again?
Yep.
Okay. Just asking.
Paul's hand goes up, you know.
We'll read it back slowly.
Yeah. Substitute motion, that no further applications or requests for demolition of any structure within any existing city-designated historic district, within any historic district listed on the National Register of Historic Places, within, or within the Downtown Design Overlay District, or a currently city-designated landmark or structure listed on the National Register of Historic Places be processed. And that the demolition of the Stoughton Highway Trailer Building not proceed until the City Council has considered possible changes to demolition-related ordinances and lifted this temporary moratorium.
Amen.
All right. Alder Person Lawrence?
Well, my only question on that or comment is I just wonder if it wouldn't be something for the council to consider putting a sunset, some sort of a deadline, so we may, so we actually work on this and, you know, have it done by no later than May 30th or June 30th or something like that. That's just something to think about.
Alder Person Truel?
Thank you. And I would certainly support that, as I'd mentioned that a few minutes ago, that I thought anything temporary should be that if you gave us something. My problem with what you're doing, what we've been doing tonight, is exactly the kind of confusion that this has taken. And that is trying to legislate something and create something at a, at a meeting. From my perspective, I can't help but feel like we are, and I will take it very personal because I happen to sit on the Planning Commission, the Redevelopment Authority, and feel like we are, I'll be kind here. Just the whole idea of, of creating new legislation through, at a council meeting and trying to figure out how we're going to work this through loosely or tightly to what's on the agenda this evening. I have heard time and time and time again from, from members of this body about the need for more openness and more direction and things. And it's funny, because I find that what we're doing, what's being proposed tonight absolutely goes against that. My, my, my reason for, for asking for this, whenever we get to the point of taking up the suggestions from the Landmarks Commission, asking for that it be referred or somehow or another get, get presented or whatever for comments from the Planning Commission and, and the RDA is based on just, if nothing else, just pure common currency. Not to mention the fact that what you're effectively doing, if you don't do that, is creating, is letting one body dictate new rules and regulations that, telling how the other, these other two bodies, the RDA and the Planning Commission, will operate in the future without asking for any input. And, and just on a, on a macro level, I'm having a real tough time with, with that whole strategy. So I get it. I understand where there's, there's specific concerns about specific properties. But my goodness, the process by which we're, you're trying to do this evening is, is the biggest joke of all. So because of the way we're at here, I will, will vote against the motion.
I have Alder Person Kittelson.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Alder Person Scott Truel that I, the way that verbiage is written there, there's no way that I could support that. We're, we're just trying to put all, all these little tiny fires and we're not trusting all our other little subcommittees to do their work and what we've asked them to do. You basically have put one, one group ahead of all the others and you've handcuffed them because they're arguably going to have difference of opinions all the time on everything. So I just can't support this the way it's written and I think that we're just trying to put way too much ahead of it.
Well, let me just comment before we keep going. You know, whatever comes from landmarks, whether they get feedback from RDA or from Planning Commission ultimately has to be approved by this body. So everybody will have an opportunity at that point to provide feedback if they haven't had any opportunity before then. And if the members of the Planning Commission and the RDA would like to speak at the council meeting, they're certainly welcome to do so. So I have Alder Person Hirsch.
Oh, that's basically what I was going to say. I said, I didn't see this as a pinning one commission. It's, it's taking the council our responsibility as council members to make sure that the commissions all work together and everything is working. There isn't any conflict with ordinances between one commission and the other, and I think there are. And so I think that's what we're trying to do and I actually commend us for taking this step and working as a group to come up with appropriate language to actually go for it. So I disagree respectfully with Mr. Truel and Mr. Kittelson because I think we are trying to go forward and making everything work better.
Okay. I had Alder Person Borsma. Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I said this before and I, for the, I'm going to repeat it. And that is that I think what we're really wanting to do is to figure out whether or not the Highway, I mean, the, the building that we're talking about here in the RDA plan is going to be torn down or not. And so, I mean, it's like we're into everything at this point. And I think what really, the, the time issue is really based on the, the building, either being demolished or not demolished. And, and I was at the RDA meeting and there, there is some urgency based on the fact that they have to make some decisions about what's going to happen with this, all these properties along the riverfront. And so I, I think it's, I think it's kind of too much for me to handle all at once. And I, I would rather have some clean discussion on whether or not that building goes or stays. I mean, it seems to me it's, it's becoming a little bit convoluted and I, I agree. I agree with Scott in a way that it's, it's like we're, we're trying to change everything all at once and it's going to hold us back, I think, from stuff that needs to be done. So I, I think I, as it's worded, I don't think I can support it either.
Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to support this. It's, the reason we're doing this is because we've got ordinances that are in conflict with itself. And that needs to be straightened out. This, this body, the City Council, is the representative of the people of this community. We're the elected body. The other bodies, which are very important, are some elected and some non-elected. This body is the one that's responsible for everything we do here in this city. And we need to do it right. You know, we're, we just, we just, we need to make sure things are right. What, what we're doing with this is setting it in motion. I mean, it was already set in motion in January to have the landmarks look at things and now it came back to us. We had all kinds of questions raised by the attorney with, with the language that came back. We need to get it squared away and get it straightened out. I, I wouldn't have a problem with, you know, March, May 30th or June 30th as far as a sunset. But I think we can get this done within a month or two. So let the process play out and let's do it right. Let's not have ordinances that conflict with each other or conflict with itself. And let's get it done right.
I have Alder Person Lawrence and then Mieske.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry if I missed this before, but Rodney, maybe you could clear it up for me. The RDA would be the body for the Highway Trailer Building to, to make the application for demolition. Is that correct? Potentially?
I assume so.
I assume, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
And they haven't done that yet?
No.
Okay. And so then my next question is, assuming that they do do that, is there then a further review after that point or is it by the City Council? Or is that then just administratively approved?
If it's not in the Design Overlay District or it's not in a listed building, it's an administrative process.
All right. Okay. That was my question.
Okay. Alder Person Mieske?
Call the question.
There's a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
And I heard a second from O'Connor. And call the question, I believe, takes two-thirds vote.
And it's not debatable?
Scott, thank you.
What was that?
He called it the question. There's a motion to call the question, non-debatable and two-thirds vote.
Oh, okay.
So, you ready? We'll try a voice vote and see what happens. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to calling the question?
Me.
One opposed, so that does carry. So we're calling the question. Do you want the motion read again?
No. No.
This is a substitute motion.
The substitute motion. All right. So all in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to the substitute motion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Okay. We'll have a roll call.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Kittelson?
No.
Swadley?
Aye.
Borsma?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lawrence?
No.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Truel?
No.
O'Connor?
No.
Motion passes on a vote of six to five.
Okay. Thank you. Long discussion, but, you know, a lot of good thoughts out there. And I'm sure we'll have even more discussion when the landmarks bring some work back to us. Do you want to continue or do you want to take a quick break or what would you like?
Let's keep going.
Okay. All right. We're on to new business. And the first item is R19 of 2017, which comes from Public Safety. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Where are we at here? Yeah. Public Safety brings together, or brings, brings forward Resolution 19-2017 authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue a six-month Class B fermented malt beverage license to the Stoughton Merchants Baseball, and I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Engelberger, a second by Truel. Any discussion or go ahead, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is pretty straightforward. This, every year this comes to us and we reviewed it at our committee and I don't believe we found anything out of the ordinary. Everything was in order and committee voted four to nothing to approve.
Okay. Alder Person Borsma.
First of all, I have a question for Mike, if I could.
Yeah.
Mike, is this city property?
This is at one of our parks, yeah. North Park.
Then I'd like to continue.
Sure.
My background is a therapist and social worker. I've worked with many clients with problems with alcohol, to include kids, families, parents and all that. I don't need, I think we need to give more permission to city to have things on, on city property serving more alcohol beverages. There are a great number of places in the city that provide places to consume alcohol beverages, both prior to and following games. And although the, although, you know, they want, they may want to consume during the game and before and after on city property, I don't think that's something that I can vote for. I'll be voting against for the sake of the city and its residents and the actual game of baseball. I think they'll play better baseball if they don't consume alcohol beverages.
Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Alder Borsma's comments. I would like to ask the chief to just give us a little update on if we've ever had any problems over there with this, this organization.
No, we haven't. There was no violation during the last licensing period. And this is a six-month beer license, which allows them to sell beer in the park, which is, that particular park does allow alcohol being present. And we haven't had any issues in the past with it.
Thank you. All right. And I'll just add that I live about a block or two from the park and I walk down there occasionally and wa, watch the games. And everybody there is handling themselves in a very adult manner. And I would say that the group has done tremendous work to improve the facility on their costs. And some of that was through funds that were raised by, by the sale of the beer during their games. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
We have two opposed. Okay. And the next one is-
I have a question though.
Sure.
Going back before this one, on number seven, we never really discussed the ordinance changes with the Landmarks Commission. We, they made a motion, we voted on something totally opposite of what the landmarks thing is. Am I wrong? If I am, that's fine. But we never discussed this, the Landmarks Commission proposed changes.
That's true. We didn't. I think there was some discussion. I heard some members of the Landmarks Commission saying that what they wanted to do was have me meet with them to discuss how to move forward. But that's, that was the only discussion that I remember about their recommended changes themselves.
But you sent us information here with stuff stricken and replaced with other words.
Oh, that wasn't for me. That was, those were the Landmarks Commission's recommended changes.
But I mean, that's what we have in our packet.
That was what they forwarded, yeah.
But we had never discussed any of this.
That's true.
So do we go back to this or how do we handle it?
Well, um-
We got on a totally different thing.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Alder, Alder Person Kittelson on this. I, I think by virtue of the fact that it's on the agenda, we should take some action on it, at least discuss it and, and decide not to do anything about it or, or, you know, we haven't, we didn't even open- we haven't, we didn't even open the discussion on, on that, particularly because we went right into the, the motions, so we never did talk about it.
We can certainly discuss it. How about if we come back to it?
Yeah, fine.
Well, it's number seven, though.
Right.
I mean, we should get back numerical order.
Well, there's people that are waiting here that like to conduct their business so they can go home, and we're going to be here all night anyway.
If you want to pull those forward, I, that would be fine, but I was just making sure we do it before the last night.
We can certainly go back to that.
We don't have to be here all night, Joe.
Well, the way it's going. Alder Person Boersma.
I, I plead to the President for a quick break.
Is somebody...
We can take five, if you'd like to take five.
I would like that.
It's fine. Okay, we're ready to continue. We're on R-20 of 2017, which comes from Utilities, and that would be Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 20-217, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the write-off of Stoughton Utilities' delinquent account balances and invoices deemed uncollectible as of December 31st, 2016, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Engelberger, a second by Lawrence. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This comes from Utilities, and they approved it seven to nothing. I'm just going to ask Brian to explain this from the Utilities. Go ahead.
Yep, this is a annual action that we take. Some, or, most of these are within the last two or three years. Nearly all of them have been submitted to the Department of Revenue for collection attempts at this point. We've pretty much eliminated all avenues to collect balances, so we're requesting that they be written off.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Alder Person Hirsch?
I just had a point of curiosity. It seemed like on there, there was a lot of vehicle incidents, and I was wondering, are your trucks being hit a lot, or what's going on?
Yep. Most of those are actually cars versus poles. So drunk drivers hitting utility poles out in the rural area or in the city.
Oh, okay.
Any other, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. R-21 comes from the Planning Commission. Alder Person Truel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Plant Commission has before us this evening R-21-217, approving conditional use permit request by Casey's Marketing Company for Casey's General Store at 1640 East Main Street in Stoughton. I would move that we tabled this item.
Second.
And there's a motion to table by Truel and a second by Lawrence, and motion to table is not debatable. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed?
Just a clarification, for those who are interested. We, we do, we are trying to schedule. Because of the open house last evening that Plant Commission had, we were unable to complete our full agenda, and I know that, that as of this afternoon, we were trying to schedule a special Plant Commission meeting for next Thursday, the 23rd, so, to try and take up, because at least one of those items had a, a, a time requirement. So I'm hoping that, that if the, if we get any indication or any information from DOT regarding this, that we would take it back to, to Plant Commission, or at least discuss it at Plant Commission next Thursday. Just FYI.
Thank you. And then R-22 comes from the Finance Committee, Alder Person Lawrence.
Ahah.
Yes.
Okay. Let me just a second, please. R-22. Mr. President, I move approval of Resolution R-22, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with the Town of Dunkirk to provide EMS services. Mr. President, appears that R-23, R-24, and R-25 are similar resolutions, and I'm wondering if, would be the pleasure of the council to combine those resolutions altogether.
Is it a motion to waive rules? See a lot of head nodding going on here.
Yeah.
Second.
Is that a motion to waive rules?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's just a motion to approve all three resolutions in one motion.
Actually, all four.
Four. Four.
Yeah.
You're not waiving any rules.
Is that the motion?
Yes, please.
And then...
Second.
Second by Jensen. Any discussion on any of them, otherwise?
Well, actually, I'm going to defer to Lisa, our vaunted and venerated EMS director, to explain it all.
I didn't pay Paul either. In 2016, the Public Safety Committee, which is my oversight committee, directed me to update the EMS contract to the townships. That has been done, thank you very much. The Finance Committee specified the, or I should say, approved the financial parameters of the contract last week or the week before. You've all received copies of the contract. As an attachment is the fee schedule for each of the townships. I believe that the contract is very fair, very equitable, and we're looking for approval tonight to go forward and take this back to them for their consideration.
Any questions or comments? Alder Person Boersma.
Just want to, this is fairly standard procedure, and it's, in your view, is all fair and equal for each of the townships to pay their share and portion, and any, any differences in terms of the, the way we're treating one township versus another?
No, absolutely not. Nope, the, the fee that they're being charged is based on a, a per capita charge, so it's, it's population-based. So one municipality may have to pay a little more than another, but we serve a greater population for them.
Does that include distance too, or not?
No, distance is not a factor.
Okay.
It's a common formulary, though.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I just wanted to commend Lisa for the work that she did on this, her and whoever helped her. They made what I would say is a significant change in, in the structure, and I think that it's going to serve all of us, including the townships, very well, so thank you for your work.
You're welcome. Can I say one more?
Sure.
And I would like to just thank you for the use of the facility last night, so I know it's, I know it's worked for you too, so...
It has, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have four motions into one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying.
Got a question, President. Do we move number 16 up then? That's R-27 with Skoll and Home.
Sure.
Move that up ahead here, so Mr. President.
Be more than happy to do that. And that's, so R-27, you want to move up?
Yeah, R-27.
Yep, and that's coming from the Finance Committee, and that would be Alder Person Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move approval of Resolution 27, approving an agreement to delay the payment of impact fees associated with Skoll and Nursing and Rehabilitation Center Incorporated Residential Care Apartment Complex.
There's a motion, I'll second it.
Yeah.
Can do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask Rodney, would you expand on this just a little bit, please?
Certainly. They're initiating the construction of their project. Part of that requires the payment of the impact fees, but in light of the fact that the city's been working with them to try to acquire a segment of land related to the Yehara River Trail, we think that the negotiation should be allowed to continue and, and not uphold the, the payment, or allow the building permit to be issued and delay the payment of the fees in anticipation of some opportunity to either reduce the amount or work out the amount of land that would be dedicated in relationship to that project.
And, Mr. President, I'll also note that the, the, the resolution calls for, if, if negotiations break down between the city and Skoll and on this issue, then Skoll is agreeing that they will pay the full amount of, of the impact fee.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Okay, so that takes us back to item... R-26, and that's going to come from, who wants to do this, Public Works or Finance?
Oh, I don't care. Tom, do you want to do it, or?
Sure, I'll do it.
Okay.
Okay. Finance and Public Works would like to present R-26-2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Jim's Tree Service for the 2017 Emerald Ashport Tree Removal and Restoration Project. Public Works and Finance unanimously agreed upon this tonight, and I so move.
Second.
And it's a motion by Mieski, and a second by Lawrence. Alder Person Mieski.
So the reason that this is coming to you tonight, after only being, meeting tonight, was because this is a time-sensitive contract. If we do not, if we wait for two more weeks, it puts us into the planting season, when tree removals are going to be necessary to be removed, and then have the new trees put in their place. So the trees are already on their way. If we do not do it, everything's pushed back two weeks, and there's a higher mortality rate.
Any questions or concerns? I see Brett's out, if you have any questions for Public Works Director.
One of my initial questions this morning was, or this evening, was that I didn't see any language in the contract regarding saving trees, but Brett did show me another part of the agreement, which designated which trees and which areas were going to be saved, so I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything you want to add?
I'll just add that we did get a very favorable price. Essentially, it's roughly $354 per tree to remove and to grind the stump and surface restoration. And we did also include in the contract to add language to extend the contract an additional year, if, as long as prices are favorable and upon mutual agreement of both parties. So as long as they do a good, a quality job for us, we'd probably extend the contract a second year.
Okay. Any questions or comments? We'll go ahead and try a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Thank you. And that takes us to item 17.
I do have one question, though.
Sure.
I'd understand that. We had a budgeted amount of 143, and the contracts were 88. Where does that extra money go?
Great vacation time.
Well, I mean, we have other things that have been coming up, people looking for money, so does that money then go back into the contingency to be used, or where does it go?
Actually, it would just stay in the budget, and you could make the determination to reprogram it for something. We'd have to amend the budget.
Okay.
And also clarify that this, that's just for removal of the trees and stubs restoration, and not for purchase of the trees. So that's a separate cost. But it's going to, it's going to come in much lower than the initial $250,000 budgeted 2017 allotment.
So I mean, but we do have other things that we were kind of talking about for money, so I mean, there we have a possibility to, to move.
Okay, thank you. The next item is number 17. It looks like that's coming from, from Finance, from earlier this evening.
Yes, Your Honor. Mr. President, I'm sorry, you're not Your Honor yet. Although we do honor you.
Likewise.
As Mr. President. Number 17, Mr. President, I move, I'm trying to remember what we did in...
So the, on this one, the, there was a no motion, no recommendation.
Ah.
There was a, I don't believe, no, wait a minute, let me, I'm trying to remember. This one was recommended, this was to recommend to deny their request to approve the assignment on the grounds that we need to know more about who this new entity is and whether it's a good security risk, essentially.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll make the motion to deny that we enter into an agreement approving the assignment of development and purchase agreement from North America Fur Auctions U.S. Inc. to Nafa Nuko LLC. So that's a motion to deny.
Oh, it was tabled.
Second.
But I'm making a motion.
We're trying to...
But I think we have actually tabled it in Finance.
Well, that's true, but this is a different body.
You can make the motion. You know, the recommendation, well, you have a motion, was there a second?
Yes.
Second, so we can discuss. Did you get a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Maybe you want to just clarify what we did at Finance, or?
Well, we weren't comfortable with the fact that we don't know anything about the entity being potentially changed to, and so we wanted to, is that, Matt, can you...
Yeah, so what...
Expand on that a little bit?
Briefly. So our current agreement is with North American Fur Auctions U.S. Inc., which is a corporation owned by a parent company, a Canadian-based parent company. The, the lawyer representing Nafa has told us that it would like to assign the agreement to another subsidiary of the same Canadian parent corporation. We're not 100% sure what, exactly what that new entity will be. I have a, a name in the agenda that they were using, but we're not, I think that might just be a placeholder name. And I think the concern that the Finance Committee has is that we are making essentially TIF assistance available to this project in, in a couple of different ways, and so we need this new entity to be able to stand behind its obligations under the contract. We don't have, this isn't a case where we have, for example, a letter of credit or some other form of security securing their contractual obligations. And the Committee's direction, I think, was, or discussion was, that it wanted to know more about, what is this entity, and how can the city be assured that this entity can meet its obligations under the agreement?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Person Lawrence.
Thank you, and if, I, I, a moment ago, I made a motion to deny it. I'm perfectly comfortable, depending on what Matt tells us, and tabling it too, I don't want to just shunt that aside, if that seems like that might be a better way of handling things in terms of negotiating or communicating with Nafa what our concerns are, so...
Motion to table.
Second.
So we have a motion to table by Engelberger, and a second by... Kittleson, and there's no debate on that?
Well, point of order, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Alder Person Jensen did have his...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Yeah, I, I just had a simple question. I just wanted to know, what was their reasoning? Did they give us any reason why they wanted to do this?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, it has to do with issues on their end, business, tax-related issues that I'm just not privy to. That, one of the questions the Committee asked was, what are their reasons? So I guess I'm going to present to their lawyer the questions. How can you assure the city? What are your reasons? Bring that back.
Okay. So we, we, we have a motion to table and a second, and there's no discussion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Alright, it takes us to the next item, which also comes from Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met on this earlier tonight, and we moved to agree with the intent of this, so I'm going to make a motion that the city attorney draft an indemnification agreement for the ag conversion fee to North America Fur Auction.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by O'Connor. Go ahead, Paul.
I'm going to ask Matt to fill in the blanks on that, too.
Okay, so when the city purchased the land under, that, that we're selling to Nafa, we purchased the land from the Mo family farm. It was ag land. The, when you convert ag land to a, a non-ag use, typically there's a requirement that an ag agricultural conversion fee be paid. We did have $15,000 or $16,000 from the Mo family placed in escrow with their attorney to cover that fee when, so that when it was triggered, we'd have funds to pay it. We've been, we have reached the, a conclusion that under the somewhat unusual circumstances here, in which the land was ag land, farmed, we, the city bought it, it continued to be farmed after the city bought it... after the city bought it for another couple of seasons. Then it was fallow, beginning in the fall of 2015 through the present. We've been advised by the city's assessor and the Dane County Treasurer, who are the two key players with respect to ag conversion fees, that the requirement to pay that fee will never be triggered. That essentially this land is, this land has now slipped through a loophole of some sort, such that there will not, will not be an obligation to pay this fee. We've explained that to Nafa, but the, I guess because the circumstances and the laws are a little bit unusual here, they would like us, they've asked that the city enter into an agreement to indemnify them so, in the event they are obligated to pay such a fee in the future, the city, the city would have to indemnify them with respect to that fee. That's their request. I have asked the city's assessor for written confirmation of their view that we won't have to pay this fee, that the city won't have to pay this fee. We've not received that written confirmation yet. I assume it's just because they haven't had time to do it. What the Finance Committee asked me to do was to draft the indemnification agreement and also draft a memo explaining what our understanding is with respect to why this fee is not going to become a problem. And so I would anticipate bringing that back to the council. If the council directs us to proceed, as the Finance Committee did, we will come back at the next meeting with a draft indemnification agreement and a memo that you can then consider at that meeting. So the issue now is, do you wanna authorize us to take that next step, draft the agreement, and bring it back to you?
Right.
Any questions or concerns, or everybody understand that? Alderperson Johnson?
Just to clarify then, does that mean that we would be on the hook should that fee come, come up?
That's exactly what it means.
Okay, and what would that fee be?
Well, so it's a fee that raises, that each year it goes up a little bit. When, when we bought, when the city bought the property from the Mo family, the fee based on the then-current fee was calculated to be about $15,000. I don't know what it would be today.
It would be roughly the same.
It would be somewhat more than that.
That was for the entire property.
That was for the entire 30 acres. So we're selling 10 acres of that, right?
Roughly a third.
So it would be whatever the, that proportion at, about a third of the total.
Five thousand plus.
Yeah, although I think that, that 5,000 might've gone up a little bit since we bought it because I think that fee, there's some kind of a schedule that they use to bump it up each year.
I have Alderperson Engelberger, Kittleson, and then Boersma.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if we don't do this, and let's say they accept it, do they then have to pay the fee if it comes around at some point?
Yeah, if, if, if they buy it, the land, without an agreement from the city on this particular point, and if somehow the obligation to pay the fee is triggered, and then they would, yeah, be on...
And the fee could be what range?
Well, right now, we think it's, say, around $6,000.
Okay. So the city gave this company land worth of what, 300 and some thousand dollars?
Thirty-seven, five an acre and 10 acres, so yes.
Okay. So we handed them land. We're gonna build a road for $3 million, and now we're gonna give them more? Is that, is that what they're asking for?
They're asking that you protect them against the possibility of having to pay this fee. That's correct.
Thank you.
And then, just to follow up on that, and clarify this if I don't get it right. The money is currently in an escrow with the Mo's.
With their attorney, yeah.
Okay. And is there something to do with the title?
Yeah, so there is a title commitment that's been issued, that they are, they have a right under our agreement to a title commitment that does not provide or does not contain potential problematic items for the title. You know, they, they have a right to essentially a clean title commitment. And the title company has listed an exception. They're saying, we're not gonna provide any insurance with respect to this transaction to cover the possibility that you might have to pay this ag conversion fee. The title company, you know, we haven't been able to convince them to take that exception off the title commitment. So that's part of the, I mean, that's kind of where we are.
So I had Alderperson Kittleson and then Boersma, and then was there somebody else? Go ahead.
The question I would have, though, is, we're talking about number 18. Now you're gonna bring number 19 up as an issue for they're looking to fund us. Is there any way we could tie those two together with the...
Indemnification? Meaning you'll do one if they'll do another, kinda thing?
Well, it's, it seems to me like what you're stating is that the ag conversion fee is pretty much not gonna come into play.
That's what we have, yes.
You were gonna do more research on that to try to bring back to Finance, but they're requesting us to do this other ALTA survey?
Yes.
So I was wondering if, okay, if you want the ag conversion fee to fall underneath the city's jurisdiction, then we're not gonna pay the other one. Is that a possi, I mean, can we tie these two together like that or not?
I think you mentioned that that money goes back to the Mo's.
No.
I'm not referring to the money in escrow. What I'm referring to is a...
He's not referring to the money in escrow.
If they say we have to pay the fee, and they wanna be free of the fee, but they're asking us to do the ALTA survey, then what I'm saying is that, okay, you know what? We'll give you the ag conversion fee.
We will indemnify you, but you have to pay for the survey?
Yeah.
If that's what you wanna do, that's what you can do. I think the Finance Committee's recommendation on the survey was no.
Trying to remember. That was like a lifetime ago, but that would be my motion anyhow.
I have...
I agree with Alderperson Kittleson.
Yeah, the Finance Committee's recommendation was to not approve their request to have an ALTA survey done. So you could say no to both. I mean, it's up to you.
Well, Mr. President...
Sure, go ahead.
Just bear in mind that this motion right now is just to have staff attorney Dregney draw up the indemnification agreement, bring it back to us for further consideration at a future meeting. At that time, he's going to be able to explain things maybe in more detail, perhaps have some more communication with the assessor or the county as to the status of this ag conversion fee.
Certainly I'd like to have that.
Yeah, yeah. We'd like to get something a little bit more in writing from somebody on this so we have some certainty, but so far seems like we don't. So that's the whole idea, is to just actually consider it a little bit more. Have the, have Matt draft up the agreement, and then in a couple of weeks or so, we'll, we'll talk about it again. We're not going to actually be indemnifying Nafa with our vote tonight. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, but we wanna tie 19 in there somehow, too, if we, and how we go together.
In the communication with, from Matt to their attorney, I think that can be accomplished.
And Alderperson Boersma, did you have something?
My question is to Matt, so does that stay in that trust forever then? And, and what do we do? I mean, is there any way to get that money out of that trust?
Yeah, well...
And then the other, the other part of that is, what about if we was, would sell additional land or whatever, and we have the rest, and the rest of that indemnity fee that comes up, and we forgive one and we don't forgive the next if that would come, ever come up again? I'm, I think we've given quite a lot, actually, to this group, and I, I'm not sure that we need to, we need to jump over hoops for this one.
Do you want me to respond to that?
Yeah.
Okay. So there are kinda two pieces. First of all, with respect to the, the money that's in escrow now with the Mo family's attorney, when we closed this transaction, it was our understanding that this fee was gonna have to be paid because we were gonna take it out of ag use. And so it was our understanding and belief that there's no question that this is gonna have to be paid. No one ever anticipated the possibility that it wasn't gonna have to be paid. So we didn't build in any process for how to return the money to them. We're gonna have to figure out what to do with that. It doesn't seem quite right that if this, if, if it's true that that fee does not have to be paid ever, that it would just sit in that attorney's trust account forever. But we haven't, we're not, I'm not trying to solve that problem yet tonight. I'm just, we're gonna have to get there. We're gonna have to figure that out. So that's the first, that's the Mo, you know, I'm, I'm not sure yet how we're gonna deal with that. With respect to the concern about selling the rest of the property, so it's our understanding that this, the same conclusion applies, that we're not, that there will no, this requirement to pay this fee will not be triggered with respect to any of that property, either the 10 acres that we're selling to Nafa or the other 20 acres that we still have that we'd like to sell to somebody else. If you're concerned that if we enter into an indemnification agreement with respect to one party, that we might be asked to do that with respect to another, I suppose that's a possibility.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments, or Alderperson?
I voted no to the land and no to the road. I'm not into giving any more money.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seen none. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
Yeah, no, no for me, too.
I don't know what I was voting, what, yeah, no.
I request a roll call, Mr. Chairman.
It's no to no more money.
Okay, so we'll read the motion again, and then we'll do a roll call. How's that sound?
What's the motion, please, so everybody knows?
The motion made by Lawrence was to direct the city attorney to draft the indemnification agreement with North American Fur Auction in regards to the ag conversion fee.
Correct.
So we'll do a roll call vote then.
But what was that, what will, that fee, that they're paying for it or that we are?
No, they...
That it would be exempt.
No, the, the motion is to direct me to draft an agreement that would say that if they were to have to pay the fee in the future, that we would have to pay it for them. That would be the import of the agreement. Now, tonight, all you're voting on is whether to authorize me to draft that agreement that you would then vote on later at your next meeting.
But I don't like what it says.
Then you don't, you can vote no.
Thank you.
No.
You get to vote no twice, once tonight and once the next time. Yeah, let's do a roll call. Are you guys ready? Okay.
Kittleson.
Yes.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Lawrence.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
No.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Hirsch. Aye. Motion carries on, a vote of eight to three.
Okay, thank you. And then we have one more from Finance Committee regarding North American Fur.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. The agenda item says consideration and possible action regarding North America Fur Auction request to fund ALTA survey, and we did meet on this at Finance. I will make a motion to deny North America Fur Auction's request to fund the ALTA survey.
Second.
There's a motion by Lawrence, a second by Mieske. Go ahead, Paul.
Well, I, I think the motion speaks for itself. I don't think we should pay for the survey, simple as that.
All right. Does everybody understand what an ALTA survey is?
It's a survey that's, Matt, do you wanna?
It's a very detailed survey that would include the kind of information necessary to allow the title company to remove certain exceptions to the title insurance that are currently showing up on the commitment, such as encroachments, easements, things of that nature.
And Rodney, do you anticipate any of those?
I, I don't. It's, it's tilled farmland. I don't believe that there will be anything that is adversely found on the ALTA survey. But I think it's also important to highlight the Finance Committee voted two-two on this particular action.
Okay, Alderperson Boersma.
The question is, how much does a survey cost, do you think?
We narrowed it down to somewhere between $700 and $4,000.
Then can I just add to that question? And that is, I really would be interested in knowing what happens to that escrow money.
I am interested in that, too.
They're gonna have to go to the escrow with the title company. He can't answer that.
I just wanna, I, you know, I don't think it should be in, I don't think it should be in...
Can't see his hand back there.
That escrow count forever, that's what I'm saying.
I don't think it should be either. That wouldn't be...
All right, I have Alderperson O'Connor and then Engelberger.
Well, as we discussed at Finance, you don't think this is necessary for us to do, correct?
Well, I, my feeling is that Nafa's request, they don't, I, I don't believe they really need it to be satisfied that what they're buying is what they think they're buying. I, I mean, I think it's, they're asking for something that's a little bit unnecessary, but it's their right to ask for it, and it's all right to say no.
No.
Mr. President?
I had...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had Alderperson Engelberger and then Alderperson Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the motion is to deny, right?
Yes.
So I'm gonna vote in favor of that. And again, we handed this company $300,000 to $400,000. Plus, we're gonna put $3 million to infrastructure on that site. And I don't believe we need to go any further with this. Thank you.
And I, I think one of the things I brought up at the committee is, if, if they wanna do this and pay for it, they could come back and certainly make that request if it's that important to them. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Alderperson Johnson?
If they don't like the land, we can find somebody else.
Paul, did you have something to add?
No, I didn't.
Alderperson Kittleson?
I was just, I mean, couldn't this work in with the other thing, though? I mean, do we have to make a motion for that, to tie those two together? If we give them the ag conversion, that we, because you're, you're pretty comfortable that we're not gonna have to pay for that.
My understanding...
Then they could just pay for this on their own. I mean, so we're not giving them anything. They're, they're gonna pay for it in order to get the other permit. I mean, is that, can we not tie these together like that, or?
Yeah, I, well, I think that's what we were talking about before, Dennis, is that we would ask Matt in his conversation with the representatives for Nafa to make that connection.
Okay.
You know...
But then we're voting on this now, then?
Correct. We're, we're, well, we, we need to take formal action on it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if this is approved, if this motion is approved, a motion to deny their request on the ALTA survey, the conversation I'm gonna have with Nafa is gonna be that the city is unwilling to pay for the survey. The city has directed me to prepare an indemnification agreement that it will consider but has not yet approved. And the city is not, has not yet approved your request to assign this agreement to another party and needs more information about that party before it will be willing to do that. That will be what I will say if this motion is adopted. And I think that's consistent with what you're thinking.
Yeah, it is. Absolutely is.
All right. Oh, I asked the clerk to read the motion because it is a motion to deny.
It is a motion to deny the request to fund the ALTA survey.
So by saying yes, you're saying no.
Too much. That's right.
It's up to you to confuse us. All right.
Pleasure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Meaning yes.
All right. So I think we had a request to go back to...
Number seven.
Number seven, which was the discussion to the changes related to the Landmarks Commission. And Alderperson Kittleson, did you have anything in specific? Did you wanna start it, or you want somebody else to start that conversation?
No, just by reading through where some of the areas have been struck, and like Section 78, 913, parentheses 3C, the Landmarks Commission shall serve, shall serve as the final discretionary review body. I, I just can't go with any of this verbiage that's in here because you totally, you take out the planning commission. I mean, my understanding is that they're to do their due diligence, look through stuff. The verbiage, I think, was right before where they give recommendations, but not that, that they're the final... that, that they're the final.
You didn't finish the sentence, though.
So it's, I, I just.
You have to read the entire sentence.
The city council.
I mean, you want to read the entire sentence? You have it there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's.
The Landmarks Commission shall serve as the final discretionary review body on locally recognized landmarks, per chapter 38 Historic Preservation, section 38 through dash 35 and 38 dash 36, which, which is already explicit in, on the books.
For all other buildings within the Downtown Design Overlay Zoning District, the Planning Commission.
That's a different sentence.
After consultation, okay, what I'm saying is, where the words have been struck, I just don't agree with the way the words have been struck. I'm thinking that it should go back to where it is.
So you're saying that you'd like to have the Planning Commission do the final review?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have an opinion, Alder Person Lawrence?
I hate to say it, but I'm, well, I just blurt it out, it's, it's nine o'clock or quarter after, I'm just wondering, you know, this seems like it might be something for a committee of the whole meeting sometime down the road. I'll shut up.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments, or is there more that you want to talk about, Dennis, or is that the main point?
My main point is that, I mean, we, we've been talking about ordinances, and how they need to be rewritten and so forth, and we made a motion earlier tonight to do the, the stoppage of certain things, and, but yet we don't go through the work that we need to do first, I mean, so how we made that motion, I, I voted against it, this should have been discussed first before that motion was made, and then kind of went from there.
Mr. President, I was a little flip before, but, I mean, seriously, my, my comment was that we're, we're going to be making sausage here again, here very quickly, and I think, well, this is not the kind of activity that's very productive at the council level so much as is it is at the less formal environs of the Committee of the Whole, plus, I'm not sure that there's a, a particular timeframe or timeline that we need to work on to get this squared away tonight, and we have a couple other things, so that's.
Is there a motion?
My motion really is to table this until, okay.
Okay.
And that's it.
There's a motion to table and a second, no discussion for a tabled item. All those in favor of table, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, all right, I think that gets us to our last item, right? The last item would be to go into closed session, is that coming from Finance?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session, session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent E, to consider the acquisition of property located at 306th Street and 425 East South Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin, the council may reconvene in open session to take action on closed session items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll do this by roll call.
Yep.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, Johnson.
Lawrence.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Again.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Motion carries on, Ashley.
All right, we got one more door here to catch.